I've been battling a few storms for the last week and today I've been in a daze.
Oh, is that right?
No.
Ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing, I guess, second thing on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions?
I've only got a...
Go ahead.
I got a notice of motion. I think I've got the proper agenda. It was there before, but it's not there now unless I'm blind here.
Is that the fireman request?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Where is it? Oh, I'm blind.
It's 5I.
5I.
You know what? Okay, we're gonna have to update this then. This is...
If you want to click the, Councilor Soretta, if you want to click the refresh button...
Where is that?
It's right at the, you see? Right there.
The tit-...
Tit-ette-ouel qui...
An arrow curling up or down?
Yep. Right in the, that might...
Did you get it?
No, I don't know what you're...
That's your refresh, right there.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Did it come up?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
I just learned something today. Again, thank you.
All right, so that doesn't have to be added. I know I have something to add. Yasta board member, we need a new member for Yasta, so we'll put that under, where I guess, 5J? And we do have something else. Alain?
There was, it's not on the agenda, there are a couple of things I'd like to make note of. One is 7A district community grants came in yesterday, so that is a late addition. I got some background information on it. District community grants are typically not, are typically dealt with in the meeting itself, so I didn't think it was a problem to add it on the agenda, even if it was late. It is a request from District 5, however, but I guess I didn't see any problem adding it on the agenda as a regular item.
Okay, so that's...
7A.
7A1?
7A1, yep. And the second item that, there's two other items, actually. One is the letter of support request for le Société Bonton. I don't believe that, I've, I guess my recommendation to the Chair, if I know that you know what the support request is, and I guess it's up to you to either add it to the agenda now or add it to notice of motion for a future meeting.
No, we can add it now. I guess we'll put it 5K?
5K.
5K.
Yep.
That's a letter of support.
Le Société Bonton, is that what you call it?
No, it's just Bonton Tourism Society.
Okay.
And, letter of support.
The other is the geotourism, but that might be more appropriate as a notice of motion because that has a lot more detail attached to it.
Yep.
So we potentially could look at that under notice of motion. There is a proposed motion that the Chair had actually received or developed, so we can look at it under notice of motion. So no discussion, but for next meeting.
So that'll be number eight.
Okay. I'll move. We accept the agenda as amended.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Anybody, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. Carrie? Any conflict of interest decorations? Any conflicts around the table? Having heard none, we will move on to number three, which is business arising from the minutes, and we do have some attachments. First one being the property, 77 School Street property. I know this property pretty good because I walk by it all the time when I go see my mom and dad, so, Alain, you've got some background on this?
At this point, it is under business arising, as it is still outstanding. We did arrange an appraisal of the property. The property is considered to be small and will likely not attract a high value on the market. So we did get, engage Marcia Dayon to appraise the property, and pending the completion of that appraisal, there's really no action to be taking at this time. And when that comes through, we'll then have some decisions to make, and I'll make reference to the fact that it is a small lot and we have a little bit more flexibility under the MGA to deal with this property.
Okay. Just a little bit of background, probably when I was 16 years old, I painted it. It belonged to the Red Cross. All right, the next one that we have under business arising from the minutes is the municipal boundary review. I guess we'll, Alain, take this one again?
The, in this particular item, we had been asked to pull together information on the districts. One of the things that council had asked us to do was to develop, or I guess, bring out the old mapping, when we had looked at the option of five councilors. There were maps developed in that area, in that case. We're also, that map is, has been developed and is ready to go. There's a couple of pieces of information we're still looking for, and it's under community counts. We have some fairly accurate information on statistics in terms of the breakdown of population by district. I think in order for council to make an effective decision, it needs more accurate information. So we do have an allocation of the district, of the community counts, but the community counts breakdown doesn't quite match our district breakdown. So there is further information that we need to pull together in order to get you solid data on population. What we did before was we allocated the population based on electoral, eligible voters. So if we had 800 eligible voters in a district compared to 900, compared to 850, et cetera, we took those eligible voter allocations, and we took our total population and allocated it amongst the nine districts. That was a fairly, fairly good way to do it, but there is a better way. So at this point, we are still gathering that information. I would recommend that we defer this item to regular council. When we have the full information, we fully expect to get, we fully expect to get it by the 8th of February. If not, we'll have to present what we have, I suspect, as you want to move this, you know, we expect the council wants to move this, so. So that's where we're at with that, and so I recommend that we defer for the next move.
We need a motion for that?
Nope.
Just...
Just a recommendation.
Table it.
Table it. We had, the council had asked us to bring it back at this meeting if the information was available, so that's my...
Solicitor Woodrow?
Yeah, via topographical layer that slipped in, I see the target dates in the first and second items to be 2012.
12.
You may want to, for, it's just, I'll show you the title.
Yeah, the title, I heard it last time.
Target date, oh, I see.
Oh, yeah, sure.
For future, for future, for...
Yeah.
Right now, you know exactly what you're talking about, but six months down the road, you might leave confusion.
Okay, that's been picked up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, third one is noise by law. I know that I had brought this one to council. I wasn't here when the notice of motion was made, but I guess the Public Works has been working on it, and can you give us a little update, Alain?
It's still outstanding. The noise by law templates have been examined. We've looked at, I know that the department has looked at some of the modeling templates that are out there. There are model bylaws on noise, so that's being developed, and Mr. Sullivan is actually the lead on that. And I expect that there'll be a draft for your consideration as early as the next meeting. And so that, I expect, will, may, there may be more than one discussion meeting on that because the noise bylaws can be, can be quite, quite complex, and how you measure noise and how you enforce your bylaws are issues that council will have to, will have to tackle. But thankfully, we have model bylaws that are of assistance.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to number four, financial report. CEO Muse?
So what I've done here is, I've provided the, the financial information that I'll be going over will be actually, you can follow the screen, that I'm giving you a headache going back and forth on the screen here. You can actually follow what I'm talking about on this screen, provided that you can see it. And what I'll be focusing on is, first of all, I'll start by saying that, of course, you have had their financial reports already. We are projecting a surplus for the end of March still, and some of that, some of that surplus is, is still due to timing around certain expenditures, that the timing is indicating a surplus now that though, in some cases, we will actually see that surplus come to fruition in certain line items, and in other cases, it, timing may actually reduce the surplus in those particular expense line items. Very briefly, I will talk about the revenue items. I'm just gonna, recognizing that there's not a lot of room there to see, I will, I will, on page one, under revenues, there are two, two line items that I'll make note of. One is the Nova Scotia Power, what we call HST rebate. The other is the change of use or deed transfer tax, change of use tax. So we've talked about deed transfer tax probably every time we had a financial statement up, and so this is just updating the information that's, that we've already been discussing. Current actuals is 81 compared to the annual budget of 70. So we, what we do with the budget is, is in the second column where it says prorated budget, we take the 12 months and prorate it to nine twelfths. That gives us the 52,500 that you see there. And so what you see is a positive revenue variance. We were conservative in our estimates on that revenue, which is why it's showing a positive result. It's difficult to predict the deed transfer tax because it does depend on transactions that are, that are occurring, that are, that are not anything that we control. So it's basically a percentage of, of transactions on property.
Would you say a three-year, a three-year, oh, sorry. Would you say a three-year average would give you a better indication?
Yes, I would say that...
Because this is gonna be year three coming up in the budget.
This will be the third, sorry, this will be the third full year. It'll actually be year four, so we could actually get monthly. We're now in, at a point where I think we're comfortable with the trend, and so I fully expect that, that will be...
That's okay.
Increasing that revenue estimate next year.
It's in the positive, though. That's not wrong with that.
No. So the other item is, is an HST rebate that we receive, and it's actually higher than budget. That is, that calculation is based on, on capital, capital and operational expenditures. So there is a bulk of money provincially that's allocated amongst 52 municipal units, and you get a percentage of the pie. So if you had a year where you had additional capital or operational expenditures compared to normal, typically you would get a larger piece of the pie. So in our situation, the fact that we had the West Pubniko project actually triggered the HST rebate to be, to be higher. So it's, it's a complicated calculation that's done provincially. We apply for that funding, and our estimate at the time, we weren't aware what we were going to get, and we got more than we expected, so that's, that's a positive item. The other items that are showing positive on a revenue standpoint, I'll focus perhaps not line by line, but more overall. The return on investments, return on investments is showing a more positive variance compared to prorated budget, and that is, again, conservative estimates on interest rates around monies held by the municipality, as well as any other interest revenue generated by the municipality. So we took a conservative estimate, and that ended up actually being conservative. The other extraordinary revenue you'll find that is higher than, than what we are prorating as a revenue at the end of December, and that is due to the Akoa project that was for the tourism trip to Les Jeux de la Madeleine. So we didn't, at the time of the budget, we did not have it budgeted as a revenue item, and you will find that in the expense lines, you will find that tourism has a negative, a negative expenditure amount. They are, they are to offset at the end of the year. So that's, that's the reason why that's higher. So that's, I guess, my high level on the, on the revenues.
Federal government transfers, close 14,000, that's...
Higher, yes, that too has to do with, with the, that too has to do with the Ille de la Madeleine. We had a variety of revenue sources for that project.
Yes, all right.
And, and the conditional travel, transfers from the province is actually lower, and that's due entirely to the funding for the physical activity coordinator, where we had a five or six month period where that wasn't filled, that the revenue is lower, but so is the expense. You will note that in recreation, there's quite a bit of a, of a positive variance. The money isn't being spent as we predicted. Part of that reason is the fact that that position was not filled. So in terms of the other line items, I would say that, I'll try to be a little bit more higher level as opposed to going line by line. Overall, we're, we're seeing that we're ahead of the game in terms of not spending as much as we anticipated. In administrative costs, in IT, and in, and in grants and convention costs, and election costs that are attached to that particular line item, we're lower than predicted at this time. Under protective services, I might be going a little fast, so if you have any questions, please, please don't hesitate. Under protective services, we see that there is a positive variance under property inspection and public works. Again, we had a gap in, in staffing there, that is part of the cause for lower than anticipated costs. We had a period where there was no property inspector, there was no building official director, sorry. So that's part of the reason why you're, you're seeing that, that variance. Road and air transport are showing better than we predicted. The road transport, I should note that, I should note that the road transport also includes a feasibility study for the, the transportation, for public transportation. That's a line item that was new this year. We're a little ahead of schedule on that one, but that's 100% funded by the province as well. So that particular item is, is a little bit better than predicted. In terms of environmental health services, garbage collection and disposal is showing a fair, positive variance. This particular item is, is based on usage. A lot of the variance that we would find here is, we predict, we try to predict based on the past history, how much landfill tipping fees will be charged and recycling, and that's all based on, on metric tonnage. So if the actual metric tonnage is lower, then obviously we're, we're in the positive there. We typically budget these items conservatively as well, so that's another reason why we're seeing a positive number. The actual contract for the hauler is exactly as predicted, it's a five-year contract. So where it varies is essentially in the metric tonnage that is actually being treated or trucked, depending on, on what it is. Tipping fees, compost fees, and recycling are the three major components of that item. The water utilities in East Pubniko are lower than predicted. However, the budgets did anticipate some capital projects, some, some capital injections that, that did not occur as of yet. So I suspect that gap will be reduced before the end of the year. Environmental development, planning and zoning, that's an allocation item. We are going to be allocating Taylor Harris's costs or, or salary to that particular item because it relates directly to gas tax, the gas tax project, the MCCAP project. So that, that's just an allocation item that will, that will be, at the end of the year, will be, will be closer to, to budget. The tourism line item of negative 37, that is basically the Ille de la Madeleine trip. All of the expenses were incurred, whereas in our budget, we actually netted, we netted that particular project. So the net amount, I'll be, I'd be happy to show you when it's all done and everything is received. The budget doesn't show the gross revenues and the gross expenses, it, the budget shows a net amount. So the, in actuality, we're showing revenues that are higher than budgeted and expenditures that are higher than budgeted, but the net is, is zero. Recreation, I did explain part of the reason why we have such a large gap there. The, there are a couple of other reasons. There's capital investments, capital renewal that has not occurred as predicted, but we expect that in the spring that it'll pick up. And also, the, other than the, the fact that the active living coordinator was vacant, we also had predicted very conservatively a $6,000 amount for Les Jeux de la Cadeau in the contingency that Les Jeux would not be financially successful, and we know that it was, so that number is going to be zero. So we know that's going to be a savings for the municipality. In fact, the money is going the other way. The, the, Les Jeux de la Cadeau will be transferring an amount of money to the municipality for two specific purposes. One would be to continue maintenance of the track and field facility, so that will likely go, depending on what it's used for, it'll probably go to an operating reserve to give us the flexibility to do maintenance or do capital. The other piece is to be put, I guess, in trust for future Acadian Games. And the third component that Les Jeux actually did for the community is, there are schools in our community that receive checks, and, which was a dispersment of a surplus that Les Jeux de la Cadeau had, and that is to be used to assist the youth in athletic endeavors. So I just, I know that doesn't have to do with la Municipalité, but it should be noted that that's what the Acadian Games did. So that's, so right now, we're predicting a surplus of approximately 278,000. Again, I caution that, that that number is, is probably overstated at this point in time. It is a prediction based on a period of time until March comes in. You know, we don't know that number for certain. However, it is a strong number. It is, some of it is timing, and what we typically, what we have done with surpluses in the past is, is we have, we've taken them into account, they actually, I mean, they're to the benefit of our residents, and so they get taken into account, they go into reserves, and they come into reserves in, in order to ensure that the residents' tax rate is protected, that there's no severe increases or decreases in, in, in tax rate. So that's, you know, that's the benefit of the surplus. It's obviously much better story than the other way around. And I did add some information, just for your information on the back, and I'm scrolling through quickly. What it is, is basically a three-year comparison of the revenues in a pie chart format, and so this is basically showing you, in 2010, 11, and 12, where, where are the revenues being generated? And so 55% of our revenues are generated by residential tax, and 17% is commercial, and the rest, as you can see, is sporadic and spread all across a variety of, of types of revenue. And so I'm not going to go in any great detail on this at this time, but I will just note that you can take a look at 2010, 2011, and 2012, and you'll notice a trend. How have we changed? Have the percentages changed in any significant way? And what percentages do you believe are in the best benefit of the residents of the municipality of Argyle? Should there be, you know, a greater focus on increasing commercial growth, et cetera, et cetera? So there's, it just gives you an understanding of where, overall, big picture, the revenues are coming from.
Counselor Soretta, did you have a question?
Yes, I did, and something that may be of a concern, a little worry, but maybe you can, if you have an idea what it is. On slightly premises, I see that we've really jumped higher on, on slightly, that's on the expense side, and on slightly dangerous premises, 11,000, that, that's not, that's not a good sign. Would it be people are dumping, or is that another reason?
There is another reason. First of all, I'll say that that amount that you're seeing as a negative, as a negative kind of overspent compared to budget...
Yes.
...is offset by a revenue line item of the same amount.
Oh.
And so what has happened in that particular instance, and I'm just, I'm bringing it back to, to, to some of the cleanups that we have done.
Yes.
As you recall, we had, council had approved cleanup in Camels Hill, and a cleanup in, in, actually SAR was done on its own, and I think there was a cleanup in West Pubniko.
That's right.
Okay.
And so those two cleanups, the cost of the cleanup was charged to the owner of the...
Okay.
...property. So they have been billed for that work.
Yeah.
But we also know that, that those two properties were on tax sale last year.
Yeah.
So whether we recover that cost is, is still unknown.
Yep.
And that will depend on whether, on, in the auction, whether the, the citizens decide that the value is, is actually higher than what is invested in that property. So we may recover a part of it...
Yeah.
...or all of it...
Or none.
...or none of it.
Yeah.
So we don't know at this point where that will be. So, so on the books currently, it's showing revenue expenses being the same, but after the tax sale, we may have a much better idea of what we're actually looking at.
Thank you for straightening that up. That's...
Thanks, that's a good question. Thank you. So my, my final pron, I guess, speech on the financial is, sorry for, pron, I think everybody knows what that is.
Carrie doesn't.
So the...
Sermon.
Sermon.
Sermon, that's a word. Pron.
I think it has to be a certain length to be considered a sermon, anyway, so I think I've surpassed that. So this, this is actually a comparison, a three-year comparison by nature of expense. And so council is very accustomed to seeing budget compared to current budget, current year. This particular chart shows a three-year comparison of where the trends are going in terms of costs. And there's, there's two areas, three actually, that are showing, that, that I'd like to kind of get into a little bit more detail. One is, is protective services. Protective services includes fire and police as, as major components, it includes others, but those are the major, major components of, of property, or sorry, protective services. It also includes transportation services, and, sorry, it does not, I apologize, it includes fire protection, EMO, property inspection, public works, and police protection and other. So that, the, most of that increase that we're seeing, there's, there's two reasons. One is the police contract is increasing at a rate of about five to five and a half percent per year. And the fact that it's already at 500, sorry, 760,000 per year, 5% of $760,000 is a fairly significant amount. So what you're seeing there in that trend, that's one of the reasons. The other reason is, starting in, in 2010, we picked up another officer. So we would have approved another, an additional officer and paid 50% for that person. So that was three years ago, almost three years ago. So that was an additional $50,000 that was added. So it is include, in that 760 that I talked to you about, that I mentioned, that includes that additional 50 odd thousand for that, for that officer, and for, just, you know, we share that particular expense with the municipality of Yarmouth. So it's a mutual detachment. So that's, that's showing an upward, and that is the major reason why. Education, what happened there is the UNSM and the Province of Nova Scotia had a memorandum of understanding that capped the percentage increase on education costs to the municipalities. The province backed out of that MOU, and that green spike in the 2012 year is a result. So where, where there was a calculation that was based on assessment, there was a certain, there was certain capping involved that capped our contribution, that is no longer. So, so that is why that cost is, is increasing, and that cost will, will increase with the assessment. So if, if, if the assessment is increasing, that cost will increase because the uniform assessment is a major piece, a major component in the calculation of what we pay to the province. Keep in mind, we have no control over that number. That's a number that comes right off and is about 26% of our total budget. So that is a provincial contribution that we really don't have a lot of control over. The UNSM is always pushing to keep those costs down, and they're pushing on behalf of all municipal units. The UNSM is always pushing to keep those costs down and, and they're pushing on behalf of all municipal units.
Uh, Council Muse?
Uh, just, uh, a question. Uh, you, you mentioned a lot of times where, okay, this is funded by the government or partly funded by the government. How's that shown on the, uh, on the, on the sheet? Like, is it, is it the, uh, do you show it as a revenue? And show the, 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 the whole expense on another line?
Yes.
We have to do that?
Yes.
So that's where the, the, the transfers or the, or the government transfers and is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and, uh, that's, uh, uh, i- if it's our project, that's how we must account for it.
Right.
But sometimes when we're at the budget, we don't know what that amount is.
That's.
So we will predict perhaps a net amount under the expense.
Yeah.
But from an, from a, from an actual perspective, we have to gross it, gross out both the revenues and the, and the expenses. And that's to make sure that the taxpayers understand where the money came from.
Well, that's, that's where, that was part of my question as well. Like, like if you, you can't budget, like, like we've gone halfway through a year and all of a sudden we realize that there's a funding there to, for, for a position or whatever. But that hasn't been budgeted. So all of a sudden, your, your revenues jump way above budget. But then your, your, your expenses are the opposite because then there's an expense there that, that isn't shown. Is that correct?
The, the, both the expense and revenue will be shown in a particular project. So I'll, I'll give an example, uh, that, that, um, I think is fairly recent and it's the Glenwood Park project. At the time that we budgeted, uh, we said that that project was priority. And this is before the election, uh, Council Muse. Uh, so, uh, and it was thirty-eight thousand, I believe we budgeted, uh, for the, the capital upgrades. At the time, we were in negotiation with ACOA for the funding, but we could not be assured that we would have it. So we, we, in the budget side, we planned for the worst, but we worked for the best. So during the year, we actually worked with ACOA. We always had positive signs that they would support the project. Then finally, they made the announcement. So our financials will show, at the end of the year, should show the full cost of the project being in the thirty-eight odd range. But then the ACOA funding should also show as a revenue, which wasn't predicted.
To offset.
To offset. So in that particular instance, we never predicted an offset in the budget. We said, the project's important enough that if we can't get the ACOA funding, we'll do it ourselves. So when we got the ACOA funding, it was bonus, right? So that's an example of how it might be recorded. Sometimes it's recorded slightly different. If it's not our project, it generally gets netted because it's not our project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, uh, I keep in mind, I, I was looking at that and the graph and the, and the, how much our education went up. And at the same time, the government put out less money in education. They reduced their share. Our shares went up. Probably all municipalities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was no restriction on that particular. So you could probably argue quite successfully that, that the municipalities paid a greater proportion of education costs this year than it had in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a fair statement. So, um, I'll, th- that's basically the trending that I wanted to talk about. There were, there was other trending that, that goes up and down. You'll see and, and, uh, for the purposes of the meeting, I, I think if, unless there's questions, I, I'll, I'll finish my financial presentation at that point.
Uh, Council Donaldson?
Yeah, speaking of trending, for the upcoming budget, um, assessment of, is assessment numbers in, figures in? So you, for start in the next budget?
Yes.
Um, mine personally are down three, four percent on two hundred and forty thousand dollar property. Is that a general trend or is that just I got lucky?
No, it's a general trend.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, I think it's, I'm glad you asked the question because, uh, I may have forgotten to mention it. The, uh, the assessments have been trending downward. Now that, keep in mind, that is the market assessment. So what's happened over the years is many of us, including myself, uh, and mine went down as well. Um, two or three thousand dollars or something like that. Uh, keeping in mind that the market is not what you pay tax on. It's the capped assessment, not the market assessment. So what we've, what we've seen is the market, PVSC, the Assessment Office, adjust the market for the, the drop in trend. So the, the actual market sales are now impacting our assessments. But they have yet to impact our, uh, they have not impacted our, our tax, uh, our capped tax rate. So what's happened is if the market has grown larger than the cap, which it has over the years, um, the gap was getting larger. So where the market was going up perhaps eight, nine, ten percent, uh, the cap on, on what was actually being, what the resident was actually being taxed on, assuming they're resident, uh, was two, three percent, one percent. This year, I believe it's one point four percent. So it may not imp- it will, it has impacted acted our taxes in the sense that we have a very marginal increase expected in our tax revenues this year. Uh, very marginal, uh, but some regions actually are experiencing decreases. Um, so, so we could see that as a trend moving forward. But because there, the cap is in play, it, it, it won't impact us as considerably as it could have. So where, where we might not have liked the cap, when we weren't getting the full benefit of the market, it's actually assisting us when the economy is, is, is kind of.
Flat.
Flat or, or, or decreasing. So, uh, I think I predicted about an eighty thousand dollar increase in residential taxes, revenues, uh, one year of the next. And that's, that's, it's typically in the hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty range. So it's about half of what I would have expected typically.
So the sales, the, the, the sales of houses and the prices generally set the trends on what that's going to be?
Yeah.
I had a developer tell me, it's not good news, a developer tell me that the price of land is virtually worth zero because you, you can build something on it, but you can't, you can't sell it because it costs more to build it. There's no way of getting your money back because of all the low-priced houses that are on the market. So if you're building a house, you want to be building it for yourself to stay in it long-term because you're not going to get your money back.
Yeah.
So, it seems that makes land worth, virtually worth nothing.
It, it may actually encourage a different decision from some of our residents that perhaps are looking to build. They may look to renovate one of these older buildings that is now seen as a, as a viable opti- as a more viable option in these times. Because some of those older buildings are, uh, are priced very, very well right now because of the market being flooded.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to know.
All right. Anything else, uh, CEO Muse? I'm just trying to remember if we, uh, make a motion to accept it?
A motion to accept.
Accept.
Accept, yeah.
Okay. Moved by Council Thuret? Seconded by Council LeBlanc. You've heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried. All right, we'll move to number five. Uh, we're not going to go to five A. We're going to go to five G, which is District Five Representation and Special Election. Um, we have an attachment of fourteen pages. Um, just to give you a little bit of background, the request for decision, on the twenty-fifth of, uh, January, Judge Muse handed down his decision to void the District Five election. Uh, therefore, uh, District Five is without official representation and a special election must be called. Council will have to make decisions today in the, in a month's time to move this election in an effective way. All right, CEO Muse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, council will be asked to consider three items. Um, um, we've done some research, uh, on this. Uh, fir- first things first, I guess, uh, I should, I should note to council what we're not deciding today. And, uh, we can't decide, uh, how the election will be, the date of the election and how that will run because we are in the appeal period. And so, uh, we confirmed this with Vi Carmichael, Municipal Elections Officer for the province, that we, once, once council makes a motion to, 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 to call an election, it has a certain period of time at which it must ensure the election occurs. So there's a, I think it's no more than eleven weeks, I think it says in the act. Uh, uh, it can be done in as quickly as eight weeks, depending on how you, you, you date, uh, how you actually, um, organize yourself as council and consequently as staff. So the information we have been given is that, uh, is that the thirty-one day period is, is on the twenty-fifth of February and we have a committee of the whole meeting on the twenty-sixth of February. And so, um, in that particular instance, the decisions in order to, uh, bring in an election, I guess, uh, could be made at that time. So, uh, the decisions at, at this, uh, it, did you, did you have anything to add on that?
No, uh, just made a. Thirty-first day was handed down on the twenty-fifth. You can't count the twenty-fifth as a day, so the thirty-first day would be the twenty-sixth. Thirty-first day afterwards would be the twenty-sixth, bearing in mind that January has thirty-one days. Uh, therefore, uh, but I, I, I don't think it would be premature at that point in time.
That, that.
And of course, if for any reason somebody files, you know, on the twenty-sixth, unbeknownst to us, an appeal, it's for the appeal period. Uh, the chances of an appeal a- a- and the chances of an appeal being filed here, quite frankly, are remote at best, if nonexistent. But we still, uh, the act still states that an election cannot be called until such time. Uh, the, the date of the election cannot be set, uh, during that thirty-one day period. Uh, because in the event somebody makes an appeal. If you set the date prior to the expiration of that thirty-one days and someone has filed an appeal, you can always pull back and, and say, okay, well, we're going to have to suspend the election until that appeal is heard. Again, here in these circumstances, uh, uh, Council Albright, through her counsel, uh, took the position of a watching brief, which basically is they made no comments whatsoever insofar as the facts or the arguments before the court. Uh, on the issues that, uh, by which Judge, uh, Justice Muse arrived at his decision, uh, our position was as much, uh, one as, of as much as neutrality as possible in order to ensure that regardless, uh, who was a victor of the, if there was a, if the election were voided and whoever is the victor, that, that there would not be seen to be any, any favoritism, uh, that, that would be exercised. And that was clear direction from council back in November. Uh, we did nonetheless file a notice of contest, uh, in, insofar as the issue pertaining to bylaw number thirty-two. Uh, counselor or the applicant, Malcolm Madden, had as one of his, through his counsel, as one of his three, uh, motions or three application, uh, issues, the, the validity of bylaw thirty-two. However, you have to understand that when anybody, any litigant or, or litigator and us as council, as lawyers, as, as barristers before the Supreme Court of Nova Scotia will do, we will, uh, pro- bring forward all of the issues that may be relevant. But in the end, the issue of the bylaw was not relevant to the case. After all, the facts were vetted out and, and everybody arrived at, at the conclusions that they did. But we did nonetheless because we had not received, uh, clear indication that that would not be an issue. On your, and a deadline was, on the deadline itself, I filed a notice of contest to preserve our right to argue that our bylaw was in fact valid if that came to a head. But it did not in fact come to a head. So, uh, nonetheless, that's what happened. And, and so on those issues that have, that, that Justice Muse discussed in his decision, theoretically, parties to the application could appeal again due to the fact that we took one, a position of neutrality vis-à-vis the two, the issues as to the correct voting district for those two voters and that the other, uh, uh, respondent in this took the position of a watching brief. If an appeal were to be launched by either one of those, uh, respondents, the chance, the, the, the first thing that the Court of Appeal would ask is, well, why didn't you say anything at the application level? And it would probably blow it out of the water, possibly blow it out of the water. So that's, that's in, in a, and, and that's my pron on the issue of, uh, the thirty-one day waiting, on the thirty-one day waiting period. Uh, that, that, and, and the act, uh, and the rules of court provide that in an application such as this, it's thirty days. Thirty days, so we wait for the thirty-first day to come and go before. But you can set your date during that thirty-one day waiting period. You can set it during that period, albeit as, as the CEO has indicated, not a lot, all the, all the while, considering the eleven week, the eleven week also period that's begins to expire as soon as you set it. Uh, but if for any reason anybody filed an appeal, you could always pull back from your election date.
Yeah.
Thank you, Solicitor Bedro.
Thank you. So, so that's, uh, basically consistent with what, what, uh, what I'm recommending is that, that we, uh, it, that decision doesn't have to be and shouldn't be today. Um, I, we have time. We still have a meeting in February that we can reexamine this issue before the actual committee of the whole meeting at the end of February. So that piece, I think we, we, uh, council should be aware of a possible schedule around this election. But at this point, uh, making the motion actually starts a clock. And so we want to, we, we don't necessarily want to do that and unless it, unless it actually has the result of, of having the election results faster. That would be the only advantage of doing that.
The date, uh, or the setting of the date. Has to be done within four weeks of the voiding of the election. So.
Which is, which is the twenty-sixth of February.
Which is the twenty-sixth.
It's the same day of our, it's the thirty.
It's the fourth.
It's basically on that day. Maybe there's a day off there, but.
Maybe we're a day off, but I don't think it would admonish. But if you set your date, uh, in, in earlier February, anyway, you, the, the, I think the timing will work out.
Okay, yeah. So, so to say that that won't be dec- decided today, uh, we did attach, uh, a, a, a potential calendar for this, for the election. Um, and so, actually, I'm, I think this is a question that, that as staff, we have been asked. Uh, I know that the, the media is very, and, and, and there are a lot of questions in public around, you know, how is this going to work when it gets, when it gets called again? Um, so, so, um, I guess I'll mention a couple of key dates just for your information. Uh, my, uh, if, if council sets the date and approves the list on the twenty-sixth of February, the earliest date for the first ad for nominations would be the twelfth of March. And then nomination day would be April second. There's suggested dates for publishing. Those are logistical things that, that, that staff or the returning officer would have to deal with. Um, assuming that electronic voting will be the choice of council again. Uh, e-voting will begin on the nineteenth. This is a prop- again, this is a draft. This is tentative. Could begin on, as, on the nineteenth and that ordinary election day would be on the twenty-seventh of April. So if it, if there's a paper, if it's a hundred percent paper, then you'd have, you'd, you'd have to consider an advance poll and the dates around that. So that, there, those dates are also listed. So that's, that's approximately what it looks like. Um, a special election has some special rules, but they like, for as much as possible, it be very similar to a regular election. Uh, and I know that Counselor Muse is probably intimately familiar with the regular election rules and regulations. Um, so, so I guess coming back to what, what council could and should consider for today, there are three items. I guess, uh, what staff would like is direction on whether or not, uh, this election will be electronic. Uh, council has made a motion to that effect for the regular council and I did not want to assume, uh, that that was the same decision. So that's, that's an item that I'd like for, for council to, to have a discussion on. Uh, the, uh, what, what are we going to do in the interim as council? Uh, to, uh, put in place to ensure that the citizens in District Five have, have, have official representation. Obviously, District Five can be represented in a lot of, in a lot of ways, but I mean official, uh, in terms of council representation. And, uh, how would you wish to proceed with the engaging a new returning officer for the special election? Those are really the three items that I think we should at least begin to speak about. Some of them have some urgency of time because staff will require the time to investigate and, and, and do some preparatory work for that.
Uh, Council Donaldson?
Uh, Atlanta, so when we, uh, we made a motion to go electronic last election, it didn't become a policy. It's something that's going to have to be made a motion at every election until it becomes, until we decide to make it a policy? Or is it just, does it have to go to a motion, I guess, is what I'm asking?
For this particular decision, if, if you decided to not make a change, then no motion. For this particular decision, if if you decided to not make a change, then no motion is required because there is a motion on record that says you will be electronic voting. The other item that the municipality of Argyle has is an alternative voting bylaw, which doesn't necessitate you to do alternative voting, but it gives you the ability to do so. So I would suggest that you you have, in a lot of ways, taken a position that e-voting is your your method, your preferred method. However, I don't believe that is locked in stone, and so from from staff's perspective at least. So so we're just asking this group to to, I guess, confirm their decision or or make a different one.
Remind him it's electronic. Counselor Muse.
Don't want to be stick in the mud, but I'm just going to bring up a few comments that I've had regarding electronic voting. As a matter of fact, it was in the paper, i- in in the local paper today regarding this, that we were going to be discussing this, it was it was mentioned. And I actually received two calls today regarding that issue and the opposition to electronic voting, that they found it very, very confusing. Not so much the, not so much the the council voting, but especially the school board voting, which we all know, the the issue that's that's at hand right now. I've heard a lot of comments regarding the electronic voting, that if it's electronic voting again, they will not vote. And I'm not talking about this particular election, I'm talking in general, that that if we, if the municipality doesn't go back to at least the option of of having either one, either the the paper ballot or the electronic voting, that they won't vote. So I'm just going to bring that because it was it was brought up to to my attention and I and and asked to bring that, their concern, to this meeting. So I know, I know there was, I know probably the the results of what, of the situation we're in now has nothing to do with electronic voting. I I'm pretty sure that that's not electronic voting, but it did have some negative results in other areas. Now, whether whether we, you know, I mean, we can't say we're only going to have electronic voting for for council. We, I think if we go electronic voting, we have to have electronic voting for for everybody. So anyway, I just wanted to to bring that up and bring my, the concerns that were brought to my attention on behalf of of my district.
Thank you, Counselor Muse. Counselor Saret.
I guess on on my part from, and I will not say that I've received any phone calls since this has come up, but certainly when it comes to to any other election while I'm in this chair, it it will have to be paper and electronic, from my position. Because in the election, in my district, and I've heard at the garage enough, that the choices that the people had with just electronic was very confusing, and especially for the, it was mostly on more of a senior, the senior population. I was told by many, many people, as seniors, that it was very confusing, they, some don't have, a lot of didn't have computers, and it was the phone, and the phone was quite a, quite an issue. And I was pretty well told bluntly that if there is ever another election, which, you know, there will be every four years, that I should take into consideration their request, and which is what I'm doing now, whether it be this election here for this, this District Five, or further on, but I'll specifically talk about this election. It has been a huge issue that I've heard a lot about, and it's not only two people. I would say, I would say that I've heard over, over a hundred people, and I would honestly say not only my district across. And did they bring it up to me only? No, I asked the question to some people personally, just to find out, to be sure it was only my district. So myself, I would certainly vote in this particular election to have also paper. So in other words, have electronic and paper. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Saret. Counselor LeBlanc.
I guess Danny and Guy. Yeah, sorry, Counselor Muse and Counselor Saret touched on it before I could, but I have a little bit of a fresh perspective on the matter, considering I wasn't part of the previous council who decided to use solely electronic voting. I won't lie, I cursed counsel during my election for doing it that way. Won't go, well, I have to give kudos to counsel because electronic voting for, I'd like to say, most people was was a positive thing, they enjoyed it. Any anyone typically younger could vote on their phone on the go, they didn't have to go anywhere. It was great, they loved it. But that being said, some parts of the population, I hate to to say, but generally the the elder population was very frustrated about it, and I think Guy's number, especially my district, Guy's number of a hundred is being a bit conservative. I heard probably a couple hundred people say that if this was the case again, after the fact, if this was the case again, they won't be voting. I don't see the disadvantage to having Intellivote as well as a paper ballot on the final election day, unless someone can touch on the matter and explain to me why that's a bad idea, I'll go as far as to make a motion that for District Five, we have electronic voting as well as a paper ballot on the on the final election day.
Ward and Dr. Ramon.
Yeah, I I have not heard a whole lot. I've heard a few people say, well, yeah, it's maybe a problem, but it hasn't been a big problem because we had eighty percent that voted. I heard a lot of people, and maybe I'm talking, I'm not talking to all the seniors and that, but I I heard a lot of people say it was a great thing, you know, probably more so than the negative. That's my take on it.
All right. Counselor Muse.
I I realize that probably by doing this, we're going backwards. I mean, we 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 took a step ahead, and I think probably we're going backwards by doing this. But I'm just, the reason I I would support the motion here is because of the comments that I've received and 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 the many people, and I know we had a big turnout, but we usually have a big turnout in 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 the Argyle elections. Anyway, I think, I I I believe we we we're one of the municipalities that has a big turnout. I know provincially, the Argyle riding was always higher than than most in in the in the voting, in the voting count. But I know it's probably a step backwards, but I think, I feel that maybe we have to at least give the opportunity. We're not, we're not eliminating the electronic voting, and anybody who wants to vote can vote electronically. And if they're not happy, at least that way they'd be able to to have that option.
Thank you, Counselor Muse. Counselor Saret.
Just quick, Counselor Muse, don't take it personally, but I don't think you're going backwards when you go by what the people are asking of you. I don't think we're going backwards at all, I think we're accommodating more, just to say that, yep.
Thank you, Counselor Saret. Counselor Donaldson.
I'm going to agree with the motion, just because it's going to give us some data on what what takes place on this, on this election, but I really don't agree with the motion. I figure we're, I think it's time to keep moving ahead, and and the few naysayers will not vote or have to come on side. If voting's important enough to them, they'll vote, if it's got to be electronic, and I mean, you just can't keep putting the horse in the barn when it's hers. So I'm going to support your motion, though, Julian.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Donaldson. Ward and Dr. Ramon.
I have a question. Could you repeat the motion? I'm confused here, I don't see.
My motion is to have electronic Intellivote voting as well as a paper ballot on the final day of the election. I don't think it's a step back in time, I think it's just being considerate of the people who are not technologically advanced as some of us. Our younger population has been educated to use computers and smartphones, but some of our elder population hasn't, and until that younger population becomes the elder population, I think we have to keep into consideration the opinions of those people. In twenty years' time from now, I don't think a paper ballot will absolutely be necessary because we'll all know how to, we'll probably have, anyhow, I think for now, we should keep into consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Counselor LeBlanc. We've got a motion on the floor. I guess the motion is to, Lysia, could you repeat it again?
For the third time. The motion for the District Five by-election, or whatever you want to call it, we have electronic voting for the week period or whatever, and on the final day of the election at the polling stations, there will be a paper ballot for those who want to participate.
And and electronic on the last day too, right?
Correct.
Just on that motion, there, I'll have to double check on how Intellivote deals with the election day itself. There's a possibility that they will close e-voting prior to the ordinary election day. So this is because, and there's a reason for that.
Because of the.
Because of, because if you don't close it, somebody could vote by PIN and then go in and do paper. So there is probably a situation where there's a cutoff, and I I mean, that, I guess, on the motion, let's just, let's let's just perhaps say that you have a paper ballot option and not be specific just at this point, because we have to be, we have to follow the rules, we have to make sure Intellivote can can manage the situation, and we and we certainly don't want a motion that allows improprieties in an election. So it it, I think you're, Counselor Muse, I think you're probably nodding for the same reason, or I just, I guess I I just want to be careful on the motion, that's all.
Counselor Muse.
Again, okay, the way I understand that it would work with the paper ballot is at the polls, you, they would have the computers as well. Or if they don't have the electronic voting, what they would have is the list with the names crossed off, same as, it it's like having, it's like having a, an advance poll, it's the exact same thing. If they had the computer, all they have to do is bring that that person's name, and it would show that they have voted. They wouldn't be able to vote, now, if you vote, because they would go, they would go for the pa, the paper ballot's only at the poll, so they they don't have a paper ballot home, they have paper ballot at the poll. So if they voted home, they voted by by, I have a computer, right, e-voting. And the the people at the poll would know.
Yes.
By bringing that up, their name, their name would be would be marked off as having voted.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, but I think you're right, the, I think you're right, in the Halifax area when they had that, there was no electronic voting after that Friday.
That's correct.
Prior to the election. I'm not sure how Clare did it, because Clare had the exact same system.
Didn't Yarmouth have something?
Yarmouth had all pay, all all e-voting.
Yep.
And Yarmouth Municipal, they had all paper ballot, so.
Okay.
The only ones we would know are, I I know, I I know for a fact that that HRN did not have electronic voting on on election day. If you were going to vote election day, you had to go to the poll and vote.
I I guess the only point I want to make is, is it can be done, it's not a problem. It was done in Clare. My only concern is that if the motion says that you have both e and paper on election day, that may not be possible. So all's I'm just saying is, is as long as the motion is just simply that that the paper option be on election day, and we can stop it there, and if the e option is available, obviously we'll offer that on the day, but the motion doesn't have to be that specific. I would hate for the motion to be contrary to how we can actually do it. So just, that's my only comment on that.
Okay.
Motion.
Question? Question? We've heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, that's, that was item five G, we're going to go to five A, interest runoff. Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Number two, the interim for, what are we going to do for District Five?
So Mr. Chair, staff just offered a suggestion that it ought to be one, one person, that is key contact.
Okay.
So that the citizens will know to call that one person, and then, of course, is the question around committees, which, which can.
Okay, so, and the key person, are we talking about a counselor or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so. Counselor LeBlanc.
I sent out an email to to most of counsel, offering as far as a contact point, I had mentioned also, as Alan just did, that it should be one person. I don't mind being that person, giving the timeframe here, I'm not exceptionally busy, I can probably handle the extrovert load, I'll, if, unless anyone has a different opinion, I don't mind being that contact point. As far as the committees, in the meantime, that's a different story.
Okay. Counselor Saret.
I would like to make a motion that we accept Lysia's offer to be the contact point for for the district, for District Five until we, until we have an election. Make that a motion.
Okay. Okay, move by Guy, move by Counselor Saret, seconded by Ward and Dr. Ramon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. All right. We had something else here.
Will that be posted, Mr. CEO, Alan, will that be posted somewhere so the residents will know? I don't know how you do it, but you'll you'll have to figure that out.
We'll be posting, I, we'll be posting it on our Facebook and Internet and and hopefully try to get it out to, to as many places as possible. Actually, the two counselors that ran in District Five are present at the meeting.
Yep.
And so so I suspect that calls may still come to either or, or one, or the other. So then then that's also a resource or reference point.
Yeah.
The reality is, if somebody calls for a question, I suspect that if somebody receives a call, they're they're going to help. It's a, it's that, it's that under an official capacity, it might not be a bad idea to, which which is what you've done, is allocate that to another, another council.
Okay. All right, and we've got a couple of the most important committees that District Five was on, or Counsel for District Five, Industrial Commission, we'll probably have to fill that seat for the time being, and also the PAC, is that my understanding?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Muse.
Are those the only two committees that we?
No, there there is others, but but there's other people from counsel that are either on, or these are the, I guess, the PAC, for example, is a committee of counsel, we have to fill that one. The Industrial Commission is?
There's, there's five representatives.
Yeah, yeah.
So it should probably be filled. Some of the other meetings that may not be, they may only meet the one time in the period of election as well.
And and I guess as long as we have other counselors on on the committee, the the really, we can probably make do with that type of arrangement until until the the seat is filled, and and so that that was my question, because if there's other counselors.
Yes.
On the on the committee, then there's really no point in in sending, just just adding more counselors there if we don't have to.
And but there, there is the, you know, you know, if if we only send one and we were allowed to have two, there is those two votes that are important too, right? So, you know, you know, we don't want to be shorthanded every meeting that, you know, so, you know, I think, especially Industrial Commission and the PAC, well, the PAC, I guess, that, you know, it is a committee of council, we should fill that seat too. Counselor LeBlanc.
I'm sorry. I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make note that that. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make note that, that those are not, I just wanted to make it clear to everyone, including TV, that that, that does not, that is not an exhaustive list of, of councillors, of Nicole's, uh, councillor Albright's, uh, uh, committees. Uh, we're focusing on the ones that, that we feel should be, should be filled. Uh, there's another, that's the Argyle Recreation Commission, that, uh, that Mrs. Albright actually served as a committee person, as a, as a voting member as part of the committee, not as part of a councillor. So when she became councillor, when she was elected, that, she, basically, seat continued. So I expect that the ARC will, will ask Nicole to continue serving in her capacity as a community member on that committee.
Yeah, okay. Uh, councillor Sorret?
Uh, I, I will take the PAC. I'll take the PAC, so if council approves, uh, as long as, when, there's another, after the election, that somebody can come back in. But I will certainly take the PAC. I was there before, I know the, the going's on, so I'm willing to take that one, PAC. I'm already on the Industrial Commission, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, councillor Muse?
I will, I, I'm willing to take the, uh, Industrial Commission, under the same conditions that, that when, when we fill the seat, that perhaps that person would go, take, take that, uh, place on the committee.
Okay. Uh, anybody care to entertain in the motion for, for these two positions?
Also move that councillor, councillor Sorret be appointed to the PAC in, in the interim. And councillor Muse should be appointed to the Industrial Commission.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second there?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by councillor LeBlanc. You all heard the, uh, the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. And we have another one under that. I wrote something down here, but I can't make it out.
Returning officer?
Returning officer, new returning officer.
I think we should, uh, we should, uh, appoint somebody internally here from staff for this election.
If I read, uh, if I read the report correctly, sorry, if I read the report correctly, that's, uh, Mr. CAO, that is perfectly acceptable, to, uh, to have someone internally do it?
It is, it's common practice in a special election, because it's one district, and it's a, uh, so it's a, especially in light of the fact that we have had a recent election, and we've had a lot of work on the list. So when you have multiple candidates, uh, you know, they, they work the list. So the provincial list always comes with its faults. And, uh, when you go door to door, you find some of those faults, and so a lot of those have been corrected. Um, and so, uh, so the list would be in a lot better shape than it would have been at the beginning. So that's a little less, um, uh, I guess, uh, cumbersome, thank you for, for that. Uh, it, uh, we did consult with Vi Carmichael, municipal elections officer, and she said it's more often than not in special elections that it's done by staff. Which, which, uh, you know, we have experience with in Intellavote. Um, so unless we select a returning officer with that experience, um, we're, we're actually training that person. Um, and so it's, it's doubly, uh, uh, I guess it's doubly challenging in that, in that instance. And councillor Muse is not available to be returning officer.
We don't have to appoint anybody here right now?
Uh, you can, if you're in a position to do so, um, and if you want internal, I would, I would, if that's the choice of council, I'd recommend that you would appoint myself and then deputy, and the deputy returning officer being Chris Rotten, as deputy, deputy clerk. Uh, typically, in a returning officer situation, you, you have the ability to designate a deputy returning officer, and in a lot of times, the CAO acts as the deputy returning officer in the absence of the returning officer at times. And I know that when councillor Muse was returning officer, I believe that, that council had appointed myself as deputy. So I'm suggesting slightly different, but very much the same arrangement.
Uh, councillor Sorret?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we, uh, we nominate, uh, I don't know if that's the right word.
Appoint.
Appoint, thank you, uh, Mr. Warden. Appoint, uh, our CAO, Alan Muse. And, uh, Chris Rotten, with so many titles, I don't want to start saying them, uh, that, as deputy returning officer, I guess. Uh, that's my motion.
Uh, councillor LeBlanc, you have a...
Uh, councillor Sorret, be me to it, I'll second that motion.
We've all heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, so was that it for District Five, number G? Okay. Okay, we'll move to five A. Interest write-offs. That one's yours, Alan?
Yes, and our taxation revenue administrator is also here, in case you have any specific questions. Some of these interest amounts for write-off are cleanup issues. Um, uh, the, uh, what happens is, uh, if, if you, in our, in our computer system, if you, if you, if you tick a box that says interest, it's gonna calculate interest whether you like it or not. So in, in the first three instances, I would suggest that, that that is what happened. Um, the municipality of Yarmouth, doctor recruitment, uh, was just, it, it was, uh, it was an item that was receivable from the municipality. Uh, it should not have had an interest component, uh, to it. Uh, therefore, uh, that's the reason why it should not be, we, we would recommend writing it off. We had no intention of collecting that, uh, nor did we have intention of billing it. It was a, it was an error. Um, Department of Energy, uh, is also, uh, is the same situation, where there, there was a designation where interest was being calculated, and that was improper. Uh, municipality of Argyle, for the SEASAP, that is, uh, interest on a, on a sewer. There was some, um, discrepancy or disagreement around the amount of connections. That was resolved, but in the meantime, the interest was, was, uh, was attached. Uh, that was at no, at no fault to the Conseil Scolaire. It should not have been charged. So we're, we're, uh, we're recommending write-off. Uh, an inactive property that is being asked, that the request is being written off, I think the reason is fairly clear. Um, it's, it's basically, um, it's basically an inactive property moving forward. The property doesn't exist. Um, so that's, I think, a fairly straightforward explanation. And there was a request for taxpayer relief of interest on a very unusual situation, uh, where the, there was some confusion or discussion around, uh, the property, and the person in question was, was abroad. And so in the period of discussion, clarification, uh, concern that this particular, uh, client had around the timing and around the security of the, of the, uh, of our website in terms of collecting taxes through Paymentis, which is a system that we use, um, in that delay, there was a slight interest on that particular, um, invoice, and he is requesting relief based on extraordinary circumstances. So that is the list, um, of recommended write-offs. These are recommended by the Department of, of Revenue.
Okay. You all have the list. Uh, somebody care to move? Or any discussion? Okay.
So move that we write off these amounts, which are, uh, I guess, most of them not, or all of them not supposed to be, uh, recorded at any time, so.
Okay. Okay, move by Warden Dartmouth, seconded by councillor Muse. You've all heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Right, five B, municipal storage shed. Okay, we got a little bit of background here. Uh, I think because of the lack of storage space at the municipal building at 27 Courthouse Road, uh, this is causing an operational issue for two departments within the municipality, and staff have identified the need for more storage space, and that's why this was brought, uh, to, to council for consideration. Councillor, CAO, Muse?
Uh, the, uh, the recommendation is, is, uh, it's fairly straightforward. It does, it does ask the municipal council to invest money. Uh, what I like about the recommendation is the fact that, uh, that the Department of Public Works made every effort to minimize the cost, um, including, uh, asking, uh, NSCC Burridge to, uh, to assist in the labor. So this particular price includes, uh, no labor cost. So, uh, the, the cost that is, is being shown there is, is, uh, is the upset value, the high end of the cost. So the recommendation from Mr. Sullivan is, is that we proceed. Now, the location of that, uh, s, uh, storage shed is, is near the, um, near the treatment plant in Tuscat. It's not actually in, in this area, it's actually just further down the road. And, uh, for a variety of reasons, it, it actually, uh, in terms of security, we have fencing already in place, and so there's a lot of reasons why it made sense to have it, uh, at that location. Um, it also provides us some, some additional storage capacity for the, the Tuscat sewer, uh, the treatment plant facility itself. So, um, um, the, I, I think that's probably the, the high level of, of the, of the recommend, or the, the request for decision.
Okay. Uh, councillor Sorret?
I'd like to move that we proceed with the spring of 2013, which will be in our, in our next budget, uh, the construction of the storage shed at 118 Courthouse Road, with the maximum approval and trucking costing $30,000.
Seconded.
Okay, we've heard the motion. It's been moved by councillor Sorret, seconded by councillor LeBlanc. Uh, any discussion?
Question?
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, move to five C, federal gas tax program. That one is yours, Alan?
Uh, this is to make sure that, uh, council, the, council is aware of the goings-on in the gas tax world.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had some changes in policy. Uh, some good, some we have to adjust. Uh, the, it's mostly good. Uh, the good news is, is that, uh, federal government is, is in the next agreement going to make this funding permanent. So we now have, uh, a solid understanding of what that number is going to be in, in the foreseeable future. Before, it was four, five-year contracts that we got renegotiated. So the federal government was saying it's, it's, it's a commitment that they have, but they weren't actually making it permanent. So that's the good news. The challenge with Argyle is that, uh, the province is asking that we spend the money that is, that is actually earned by the municipality of Argyle, uh, until March 31, 2014. And so, um, what's attached is... Just having a problem here. Uh, what's attached is, is some, some background information around, around, uh, what that might mean in terms of, uh, in terms of gas tax. I'm just having a technical problem here. Let's just grab the paper, good old paper. CE, it's electronic with a paper option.
It does work.
So, uh, so basically what we're projecting is, um, depending on where we land in terms of, of the Dennis Point Extension Project, if that project actually goes ahead, uh, we expect to be about 243,000 remaining in gas tax that remains unspent. So we need to spend that if we want that. That's basically the bottom line. Uh, we, we don't have to make it, and, and that's okay, because it has to be invested in our communities. It's, it benefits us. But, I mean, of course, the ramifications of that is, if we don't spend it, the province gets to keep the money. And so I suspect what will happen is they've given us some hard deadlines, and later the deadlines will be loosened. They just don't want to have to administer two different programs. That's the logic behind their decision. So if, if the Dennis Point Extension does not occur, then that number actually increases to $443,000. So what it, what it does is it puts a little bit more pressure on this council to make decisions around the money that needs to be spent by March 31, 2014. So that might change the order at which you do projects. So I don't expect necessarily that you'll make a decision on this today, but I wanted to bring it up as an issue that needs to be addressed in the near future, if not today. Um, I've, I've given, uh, council a list of the projects that you have identified as priority, either through the, the ICSP plannings, or your priority, uh, setting sessions at the Sweran, or any other area that you've actually established priorities, be it the strategic plan or whatever. So I took all those documents and looked at them and said, okay, which ones actually attract gas tax investment potential? So they're listed in this, in this, uh, request for decision. My recommendation is to exa, is that council examine the priorities and agree on how these funds ought to be allocated. I don't expect this to be a quick, I, I expect this to be a multi. Uh, but that's entirely up to you, I guess. I shouldn't presume anything, but it's, it's really what I'd like from council's direction in terms of the order at which we, we address this.
Okay. Uh, councillor Sorret?
Uh, the, around this, this, this council table, we've heard a lot about the Wedgeport sewer system, and probably I'm just complaining, nothing to do with you, uh, Alan. But by God, the Wedgeport wastewater system, man, dear life, it's too bad. They can't be, that money can't just be put aside for that, for that project. And I know it's gonna be spent by March of 2014. And there's nowhere, according to what I've read here, they just will not allow it, to bank it somewhere to, to, uh, to, to, to put it in that project. And we're not far advanced enough to, to allocate any money there, from what I've read here. Uh, the, uh, but something you just said that I, a few minutes ago, that may, they may loosen the date, you think? But we can't bargain on that, though, not loosening the dates to put into the Wedgeport system there.
Um, did you want to go to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the, um, a couple things. Um, we don't know that they'll loosen the deadline yet.
Okay, that's right.
I trust that as we get closer, they, they may. The, um, because we've seen it done before. I should note that if we wanted an extension, we could apply. And it would extend it to March 31, 2015, that we would be able, so we'd have an extra year in order to spend that money on whatever project we, we so choose. And it, it, the money that, excuse me, the money that gets spent doesn't have to be on a completed project. It just has to be spent. So it, on the Wedgeport project, we had identified that one as priority. When we get the BCF funding lined up, and the project makes sense, the gas tax would, would be allocated towards that project. It doesn't mean that the gas tax cannot be allocated
Good point.
to the Wedgeport sewer project.
Good point.
It means that, that, that this year's gas tax and next year's gas tax can't be, unless we spend it. And we can't spend it unless we have a project.
Okay, thank you. One more quick thing. At the meeting this morning, Tuscat wastewater, identified about $20,000 maybe for the Tuscat wastewater. And I know it's not a, it was not on our priority list, but since you brought it up this mo, it was brought up this morning at our committee, uh, that could apply if we were advanced enough. You know, we could prioritize some stuff where if it's needed and it's gotta be done, that could be used, but just...
I, I will say that that particular project is listed under a potential, uh, projected spending in the next two years. So that the number that, the figure of 243,000.
It is there.
It is there.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Yeah. So...
Uh, councillor LeBlanc?
Uh, I guess my question is, can we trust that staff has done everything they could to do their homework, that none of this gas tax can be spent in any way on the wastewater, Wedgeport wastewater project? Just seems to me that this has been a long-stemming issue that we've been talking about for years and years, long before my time here at council. And, uh, I intended to push it as hard as I can, and it seems that, uh, it's very discouraging that right now we have money to be spent, and we're just gonna throw it all willy-nilly, uh, whatever project we can, just to keep that money when we have the wastewater project on the table waiting to be done. And, uh, I guess it's just a shame that we can't spend that money. I'm fully aware that there's rules and regulations. But, uh, as far as surveys and procedures, even, uh, I think at the wastewater meeting, there were a few, uh, mostly everything were variables on which way we, which road we choose to go down. But there were a few things that were guaranteed, set. Can we not invest in those, uh, set buildings or procedures with that money that we're, uh, we have to spend before March of 2014?
It's, um, it's possible that, uh, gas tax pre-2014 could be applied, uh, against the Wedgeport project. Um, I thi, I guess, from a staff's perspective, uh, we anxiously await ABL's report. And maybe that will identify opportunities for us to invest in a waste, Wedgeport wastewater, uh, project. Uh, before we get that, I really don't know that I can answer that. Um, but I mean, you know, I, the difficulty with, the difficulty with... But, I mean, you know, the difficulty with investing the tax, the gas tax, pre-2014 and pre-confirmation of funding is, once you make a decision to move in that direction, whatever costs that you incur at that particular instance are ineligible for additional funding for BCF. So, what they say is your eligible costs are, they begin when you're approved, and let's say that's March 31, 2015. If you've incurred costs before that, they're not eligible. So, there may be ways to invest the gas tax in a Wedgeport wastewater project. I'm not going to... I guess I shouldn't suggest there isn't a way, but I guess we're not... We don't have all that information.
Until we hear from ABL, we can't. Well, I think we should defer from investing that money until we hear from ABL.
That sounds like a reasonable...
Maybe contact them and light the fire under their bums, maybe.
We have done that, actually. Yeah. We had a telephone conference late last week, and they have committed to bring some information to council and to staff as soon as possible. So, again, I just want to say that there isn't a rush to make a decision on this one. And so, it is... What staff wanted to do was inform you as soon as possible.
Yeah. So, we just defer this?
I think tabled is appropriate.
Table? Okay. So, we'll table it to the next meeting? Or the next committee of the whole?
We can table it...
For whenever we're ready to deal with it.
Well, it's probably the next committee of the whole. It's... I'm expecting that ABL will get some information, but I expect it's going to be really close to regular council time, so it might not give you enough time for you to make a proper assessment.
All right. So, we'll table it to the next committee of the whole. Okay. Thank you. Is that all on this one, the CEO muse? Okay. 5D, Appointment of Regional Enterprise Network REN representative. We need to appoint somebody to the REN. Go ahead.
Are you looking for a representative, I think, from each unit?
Yes, sir.
The eight units?
And this is, of course, the REN doesn't exist yet, but to start the discussion around the potential of a REN, they're asking for each municipal unit to select a representative, council representative.
Okay. Are the wardens and the mayor's ex-officio, or no?
No.
No, not to mine.
Okay. So, we're looking for a representative?
Sorry, being a counselor?
Yes.
Is there anyone here who would like to volunteer?
Counselor Soret.
Do you know, Alan, how many... How many times they meet? You know, like, is it once a month? Is it... It could be four... They're just in the proposing phase and that, so there could be a lot of stuff on the go at start, and then...
I think it'll be... I expect the meetings would... I know that they're looking to schedule a meeting in February.
Yeah.
And I expect that they might meet more often, perhaps like March and then April, in that range of time. Like, we still don't have a commitment from the province in terms of what it's going to look like. So, some of that pre-work, logistical work, there may be, you know, there may be more than one meeting a month. It may be multi. And then after that, I don't... It doesn't necessitate that particular counselor to be a member of the REN decision-making group if it gets created. It doesn't mean that person continues. It means that that person will be involved, and I guess, in the discussions around what it might look like.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, I can't know for sure.
No, I know. I know. Just give me an idea, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll put my name forward.
Okay. So, we've heard Counselor Soret is interested in putting his name in the... For the REN. Need a motion for that? Anybody care to make a motion?
So, move.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Muse. And Counselor LeBlanc?
I pressed my button a little too late.
I have plenty on my plate if you want to go. Just wasn't given any... So, I said that.
If you have plenty on your plate, by all means, Counselor Soret, I... In no way do I want to impose myself in front of you, but I feel like...
No, no. I have plenty on my plate.
I feel like this is sort of one of my callings, and I'd love to do it.
Thank you. Go for it.
We had a motion that started. We didn't have a second, so I guess...
Oh, seconded.
No, the motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor for you.
Motion on the floor was for Ms. Yessiret.
Going too fast here.
Yeah.
So, we rescind that motion?
The motion...
We didn't have a second.
Motion was not seconded, so motion dies.
So...
I will further move that Counselor LeBlanc be the representative.
Okay. We have moved and seconded that Counselor LeBlanc go on the REN. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. Now, it's carried. Okay?
It'll be... Mr. Chair, it'll be interesting. In the minutes, five or six years down the road, we'll see that there was a motion for Guy to be the representative, and that it wasn't seconded, and it'll make it look like nobody liked Guy. I just thought I'd say that out loud. We know what happened, but, you know, the books may not look the same years from now.
Moving on to 5F. 5E, sorry. Missed a letter. That's the West Publico Sewer, Manhole Number 55, Pump Station Number 5. You do have an attachment of two pages here, and just to give you a little bit of background, due to the heavy rains, the design flaw in the sewer system, Manhole 55, located at the Abbott-Saber Road, like where the new credit union is, has been overflowing and has been causing some problems. This is something that the West Publico Sewer Committee did identify to fix, and we're bringing it to council. I think there is a recommendation from the CEO, but I will let him take care of that.
This has been a longstanding issue, and it has been exacerbated somewhat with the credit union being added at the location. We're being very conscious of the budget for the West Publico Sewer. The West Publico Sewer this year has had an unusually difficult year for sludge removal costs. We're rectifying that, but it's not rectified yet. And so, we're conscious, very conscious of the, I guess, the tight budget. I guess I would suggest that no work will be done before the year-end anyway, but if council is so inclined, they could begin the engineering work now. And I think that would probably fit within the budget for the fiscal year, so that would be my recommendation. I should also note that the West Publico Sewer Committee did endorse this. They are the ones that actually started the ball rolling in terms of identifying this as an issue and brought it to council, and it came up through staff.
I would so move that we accept the CEO's recommendation and the Sewer Committee's recommendation, too.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Counselor LeBlanc?
No. Just going to make that motion.
Okay. We need a second. We need a second, there. Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded that... So, all those in favor signify of saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. Carried. We'll move on to 5F, which is Dark Sky Proposal Letter of Support. Okay. I do have a little bit of information on this, and I'm just trying to find it here. Okay. This was brought to us, or brought to me, by the owners of Trout Point Lodge, who sit on the Bonton Tourism Group. And so, Argyle is home, or municipality of Argyle is home, to a large portion of the Tobyattic Wilderness Area, and this part of the Tobyattic is home to the least amount of light pollution and darkness nighttime skies in North America. And in general, has very little light pollution, excellent skies for stargazing. The council... They would like the council to approve or support for seeking an official designation for the Tobyattic as a nocturnal preserve, according to the Royal Astronomical Society, or a starlight preserve UNESCO, and support Bonton, which is a new tourism group, in seeking designation for the municipality as a starlight destination for tourism purposes, supported by UNESCO, United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. Right? Is there any questions or debate, or Counselor Soret?
I saw move that we, I guess, we accept that, the letter, and we send a letter of approval, I guess.
Letter of support?
Support, yes.
I think it's a letter of support that we're looking for.
Yes, you're right. Sorry.
And just to kind of, I guess, to give you a little bit more... Hmm? Oh. So, okay. Seconded. Okay. Did you just seconded, or did you have a question, or...
Both.
Oh, go ahead.
Does this... If this motion is to pass, does it trump any future development of mining?
Yeah.
Because mines need light.
Yeah. See, and I'm glad you asked that question, because I... As I was reading it, I forgot to mention it, because I asked them the question, too, because we have a tin mine that's close by. But this is in the Tobyattic Wilderness Area that's already been designated by the province. There's not going to be any mining or anything there, so it's in the area that's already being provincially designated, so... And it wouldn't trump, you know?
No, it won't.
Yeah. It's just purely like a marketing, promoting tourism initiative, you know? It's got nothing to do with, you know, affecting mining or anything like that, so...
Question.
Okay. You've all heard the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay. Carried. So, we did the 5G. Now, it's 5H. MCCAP, Terms of Reference Approval. Alan, that's one of yours. Too many letters for me.
This is the Municipal Climate Change Adaptation Plan. As you've approved, Madame Harris is going to lead this initiative, and this Terms of Reference has been amended, adjusted, to move forward with the work. Taylor has been doing a lot of asset mapping work as it stands, and under this Terms of Reference, Counselor Danny Muse will be representing council as counselor, and along with a variety of staff and EMO and planning support. I would recommend that the Terms of Reference are appropriate and that be approved by council so we can move forward.
I'll move.
Okay. Been moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. Move to number 5A. Fire Department Volunteer Banquet, Guy.
Yes. Thank you, dear warden. At the fire association meeting that we had this month, and I'm a committee member, a committee member from council, there I asked... I've been on to a lot of these meetings, and our volunteer firemen do give a lot of time, you know, very dedicated, away from their families, and even last week, you know, I'll throw this in, that they had a course at Lake Vaughan, and I happened to find I was plowing up that way, and then the log was full of volunteers, it was two days last weekend, and, you know, I had not been paid to do this all volunteer. And other times, which they do this, you know, for the benefit of our municipality, you don't get paid. We give them, I believe they get plates, if they're volunteers, plates free. We do supply them with money to operate as a grant, but I thought...
In recognition of the hard work they do, they're away from their family and everything, and, you know, the risk they take, they take on their lives at times, why don't we show appreciation, council show their appreciation, you know, by having maybe possibly a banquet, if it was feasible, you know, and to show our thanks, you know? And I did ask at the meeting, first of all, if the association would mind if I made the request. They didn't ask me. I just passed that along, and I want you to understand that I did not make any promises, did not say that this was a done deal. I just said, "Let me bring it up to council, see what they think. If they could price it out, maybe it's not, we can afford it." But I said, "At least I'll bring it up." And I would like to ask the other council member if we could get the staff to give us a price, and at next meeting, at our next meeting of regular council, that if staff had enough time, if the CEO thought they had enough time to bring a cost, I could help in getting the numbers and that, possible numbers, and give us a price on what it would cost, and maybe we could have a... Then we could have a vote or a discussion on it, if they were... If council was in favor or not.
Thank you, Counselor Soret. Counselor LeBlanc?
I think that's very... It was very nice of you, Counselor Soret. I think our firefighters are an important part of our community. Without them, we'd be in grave danger. I'll make the motion to direct our CEO to price the cost of a banquet, obviously, if it's a burden to our municipality. Although, I'm sure we all do respect what our firefighters do, but if it is a burden and we can't do it, well, so be it, but we won't know until we price the cost of a banquet. So, I'd like to make a motion to direct the CEO to price the cost of a banquet for the volunteer firemen of the municipality of Argyle and report to council at its February 12 regular council meeting on that.
We have a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Do we... We don't... Do we have any idea how many people that would... I mean, we can get a price per plate, how much it costs per plate, but...
Looking at things, it could be as high as 150 and as low as 90. I was up in summer to Earl Renard and Steve Jackard, and this is kind of a number we came up with. You know what? We could be the waiters. We could wait on them to show our appreciation if we wanted to. I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing that in anyhow.
It may save on costs.
Might break a few plates, but...
Just if you wish, I mean, depending on what you're looking at, if you're looking at 90 to 150, you're looking on average cost of 15, $25 a plate, depending on where you're going to do it. You can do it at a local community hall, or you can do it like a buffet style at the Yule Argyle. I mean, I guess the only suggestion would be that it would be in Argyle. But, I mean, if you're looking at the high end of, you know, probably, let's say, 30 would be probably at the high end, at 150 being the high end of the volunteers, that's $4,500. So, that would be your maximum investment. So, it obviously would, depending on participation, you wouldn't get 100%. You know, you might get 7%. So, I would suggest that that's the line item that I would suggest is 4,500. So, if you wish to deal with that now, that's entirely up to you. We can incorporate it in the budget for the coming year. It's really up to council.
Counselor LeBlanc first?
Pardon my ignorance on our budget, but do we have any type of funding allocated for such a scenario?
We don't have a budget line item for that at this time, so...
But one can be made, sorry?
We can do that for the next fiscal year, depending on the timing, or we can... Or council can make the decision, because it's anticipating a surplus that it will utilize part of that money to celebrate our volunteer firemen.
Okay. Counselor Donaldson?
Is there consideration for allowing the firefighters to invite their spouse?
Yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, I never even...
I was thinking of that, too.
Yeah. Very good point. It slipped my mind, I guess, for whatever reason I shouldn't.
Before, yeah, you'd have to... You'd have to get a... You'd have to get some concrete numbers before you set the budget, because there's some that don't, or that aren't married, or have a significant other, and there's some that's not going to come.
Very good point.
But the number could be a little higher than what Ellen...
If spouses are included in that number, yes.
Double.
No.
Okay. Warden, Dr. LeBlanc?
That's a good point. I was kind of thinking of that, too.
That's a good point, I was kind of thinking of that, too, and, and, you know, the, the one that stays at home is probably as important, and looks after the home, and, as, as the one that goes out and fights the fire or does the rest. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tag team, eh, it's a team match, and very, very important that we, we celebrate the spouses, too, you know?
I could get concrete...
Pete, oh, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that, Calvin. I could get concrete numbers for our CEO, and, so he could get numbers ready for our next meeting, and then you'll have something to deal with, and it could be yes or no, whatever. Again, there's no commitment, nothing, and then, and, and the Fire Association knows that. And something that was told to me by, by the, the interim president of the association, he said, you know, it might be good to call it the Hector Baba Memorial Banquet, you know, and just for this time, doesn't mean that to be every year, but just for this year, it'd be a good thing to, you know, ask, ask his spouse, his, his, his wife, Hector's wife, that if it would be okay, first of all, of course, but I thought it was a very good suggestion from them. But yes, I, that's a, Lucia, that's a very good thing about, or Donaldson, about their significant second, their wife, yeah. Thank you, and I will give those numbers to Alan.
Okay, so there was a motion started?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, there, okay?
We bring it up to the next meeting, so...
Okay, so the original motion sticks?
Yes, the original motion was to direct our staff to assess what such a banquet would cost, and for further...
Okay, all right. So it's been moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried? Okay, so that was, I... Okay, 5J, Yasta Board Meeting.
Okay, I know a little bit about that, because I'm the one that was sitting on the Yasta Board. I got a few, a few contact, a few conflicts of interest there, because I do administer the Living Warts Program, and I was also a demonstrator. So for me to sit on Yasta, tourism-wise was good, because it's something that interests me, but decision-wise wasn't very good, because any budget item or money item, I couldn't vote, so, you know, it's not really fair to the municipality, it's not fair to the Yasta Board. So we are looking for a new member, and I guess I am willing to trade with somebody, or whatever, to accommodate, if we can find the right person, so... Is there any thoughts or suggestions, or?
How often do they meet?
Well, this time of the year, they meet quite often, but usually it's once a month.
Okay.
It's on Monday, 1:30 in the afternoon.
Counselor Murphy's not here, but you can't say no, I can't...
I think Counselor Murphy used to be on, on the board, so...
I'll, I'll take that.
Okay. So which one can I trade?
You, you really don't have to have another one, right?
No, no, but if, if there's one that you want to trade, I...
But I'll take that one.
Well, thank you. So we have to have a motion?
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor Muse?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor LeBlanc?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, okay, Bonton Tourism Society, Letter of Support. I also have some background for this. Again, this is brought by the, the Bonton Tourism Group. They'd like to have a, a letter from council supporting their new non-for-profit tourism association, Bonton Toujours Acadian, and its goal of promoting Argyle's Acadian cultural heritage for the purpose of economic development in the municipality. And they'd like to have this letter to give to the tourism agencies in the province. They're planning on meeting with them in the next few weeks here to, to discuss things, so... So it's just a letter of support.
Also move, that we, that we give them a letter of support to the group, the Bonton Tourism Association.
Okay, moved by Warden Donfremont, seconded by Counselor Surret. I guess he had your light on, but...
Sorry, that's what it was.
Any more discussion?
Question?
Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Okay. Number six, Correspondence and for Information Statement of Provincial Interest SPI Review. Can I have it here somewhere? This has to do with the Department of Agriculture. Do you have any more, CA Muse?
Nothing significant to add.
Just for information, right?
All right. We'll move down to number seven, Financial Requests. 7A, District Community Grant, Belleville School Breakfast Program, you have an attachment? Okay. This is, okay, I guess the letter goes, as coordinator of the Belleville School Breakfast Program, writing to request a $500 community grant, money to support our program. The breakfast program is extremely important in our school, as we provide healthy breakfast, food items to children, free of charge, three mornings a week. Milk, juice, and three different food choices are offered each morning, including cereal, toast, oatmeal, fresh fruits, yogurt, cheese, raisins, et cetera. An average of 60 to 80 children take part in the breakfast, up to 120 children during special occasions. And, so this is a district community grant coming from Jolynn Muse, Belleville School Breakfast Program Coordinator.
Do, do we have any money left in that district?
Yes, sir, $500.
I so move that we give them the $500 grant, community grant, for the breakfast for the kids.
Okay, Counselor Surret?
I second that, and does, does that fit the, does that fit the district community grant criteria?
Yes, it does. It belongs in District 5, as the location of the school is in District 5.
That's all.
And there is room in the budget, and it, and it fits the criteria.
Okay, any more discussion?
Question?
Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried?
Nope.
Okay. 7B, Grants to Organization, La Voie de la Mer, you have an attachment? Nine pages.
That's quite a program.
Okay.
Just a reminder to council, to the chair, that this, this particular request came in before the policy change. So, policy change, I guess is a bit more strict in terms of how we are going to deal with these grants that come outside of the deadlines. This one came in before that, so I did bring this to the attention of, of council, and you agreed that it, it ought to be considered, because it predated the policy. So your, your options are essentially to, to fall under the Grants to Organizations budget, which we do have some room there, or we, or we reject, or we defer. Those are really the council's options.
Counselor Surret?
As one of the persons that's been yacking here for the, for a long time about putting money, putting money, that was, they should apply for grants, they should apply for grants, I've yelled and yelled my share around here. But you know what? When I saw the Romeo and Juliet play that they, these people put on, and when these kids came here, you know what? There's no way I can say no to this. And I'll quote myself on paper on that, I just, it was so tremendous what they did there, I, there's no way I can say no to this.
This is bigger again.
Oh.
Counselor Muse?
Where does the money, like, like I know, we have a budget for the, for the, for the grants, which is, and they have a deadline. When we have extraordinary requests like this, where does it come from? What do we have a budget for extraordinary?
Budget for after, we have some money set aside for after budget.
After?
This is why the new policy will give us two deadlines.
Yes.
We'll deal with them in September.
But there is a budget set for these extra, extra...
We have, yeah.
Okay.
And, and according to CEO, there, there is money there to cover.
Yes, there's a, there's a positive surplus, there's a positive variance in that line item of $2,000, as at the end of December. A little over 2,000. This particular organization's asking for 1,000. The, the room is there, so it's, it's council's discretion. And, and in the, just, just Counselor Muse, in the future, that particular budget line item will, will, will not exist the same way, that it will be actually grants, and, and it will be allocated in two sections in accordance with the new policy. But because the, because those trickled in, and, and council did consider them, we had to put a budget line item to, to make sure that we didn't go over.
Okay. Counselor LeBlanc? Sorry, Counselor Donaldson?
Just to touch on it a little bit, when I, when I ran my campaign for, for this council, I, I always stated that we needed a strong economy, but also to retain people in here, we have to have a strong social aspect to the municipality of Argyle. I feel like, although this doesn't fall maybe in the municipality strategic plan, it falls into my strategic plan. Also, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to give this to just anyone, but Madame Yvette Donfremo puts on one heck of a, one heck of a play here at our Echo Secadora de Paraba, I think, I think we should definitely give it to her.
Counselor Donaldson?
I'm making that a motion, so we can discuss it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded? Do you have?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. So you've, you've heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried.
Just for clarity on the motion, it's for the full amount?
It was $1,000, right?
$1,000.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
Thank you.
It's bigger than ever this time.
Yeah, okay.
More people, not only students.
Do we have any notice of motion? I guess we got the juror, geotourism piece that we will deal with later. Anybody else have a notice of motion? I haven't heard that. Number nine is question period. Do we have any questions?
Move adjourned.
Moved that we adjourned. All those in favor?
Seconded.
You don't, you don't vote.
No, don't vote, just adjourn. Okay.
Thank you.